Pledge for the pledges.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Please be seated. Item number two is the invocation. For that, our friend Pastor Michael Orr. Welcome, sir.
Let's pray together. Righteous and loving heavenly Father, we're thankful for this day. We have to be able to talk about the business of this wonderful city, and we just pray, first of all, for all of its leaders, for the city council, for all those who are in charge of our emergency services, and all those who are in charge of planning and taking care of our city. We pray a blessing on all of them and their families. We pray for safety and health for each of them. We thank you so much for being able to get our schools going once more, and all of our teachers and kids, and we just pray for safety for them and for a good and prosperous semester. We thank you that you would be with those who are hurting or cold at this time, and we pray for those who struggle with finding homes and shelter, and pray that we would be able to do what we can for those passing through and those in need. We thank you that this is a compassionate and loving city, and we pray for all those services that help them and show love and kindness and compassion to those around us. We thank you for all the projects that are going on in the city, and all the building projects, and all the various decisions that are being made to be able to enrich our community, and we just pray that we would do those things to the best of our ability and to appreciate all that we've been given as a city, as a neighborhood, and all the things that we have. We're thankful, Lord, that you take care of us and bless us, and we pray to continue to be blessed and enriched each day. We thank you for this group of people who have come to talk about various business matters, and we just pray that all those things be done with wisdom and understanding and patience. We thank you, and we pray for the city council now as they make those decisions. Help them and be with them as they make these decisions for the betterment of our community. We ask you all these things, in your holy son's name we pray. Amen.
Thank you, Reverend. Appreciate it. Item number three is the audit participation. With that was covered on the screen. Please silence your devices, phones, et cetera, so we can have a good meeting. If you need to take a call, please step outside. I'd like to welcome those folks watching online. Hopefully, we have a good group watching. Please give us some feedback as to the audio-visual quality of the broadcast. We hope to have more people join us online. Moving on to item number four is the consent agenda. A is action regarding minutes of January 7th. B is action regarding resolution 2020-2 revisions to personnel policies, chapter 10. C is action regarding award of contract for SM FM 156 utility relocations. D is action regarding amendment of individual project order with Kim Lee Horn and associates from McIlroy Boulevard curb and gutter. E is action regarding ordinance 2020-01, appointment of municipal court judge and associate judge, and approval of municipal court judge agreement. I will entertain a motion.
Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
I'd like to pull item 4B, please, for discussion.
Item B?
Yes, sir.
B is in boy?
Yes, sir.
Okay, then we will vote, well, I will entertain a motion for A and C and D and E.
May I make a motion to put the ones you just listed there?
Okay. Second. Second, Patrick, second. All those in favor raise your hand. All those opposed? Let the record reflect, we do have a quorum, a full house tonight. So, we will discuss item number B now. So, pull that up. Item B is action regarding resolution 2020-02, provisions to personnel policies manual, chapter 10. For that, City Manager Gabriel.
Mayor and council, happy to answer any questions you might have. If you'll recall, back in the budget process, we talked about this idea of having a tuition reimbursement program, pretty common for cities our size and throughout our region. It's a benefit for employees to encourage employees who are desired to receive more education, to have a means to do so. I'll put him on the spot, but somebody that's indicated, he's back there, Glenn Reeves, the man, the myth, the legend. He's also a renowned Star Wars buff, so trivia information. Employees like Glenn Reeves are why this was brought to you through the budget process and why we're considering this program, and that is to allow them a vehicle to receive training that benefits their current job. Glenn has indicated desire to go to TCC, pursue an environmental technology associate's degree. He's got a bright future here at the city in almost 20 years of, right, almost 20 years of service, even though he appears, minus the beard, to be not much older than 20 years. But happy to run through any questions. There's a simple, Melanie compiled this, give her credit, kind of a simple formula. So, if somebody pursues this program, we reimburse the tuition-only fees. There's a two-year commitment, so if an employee leaves after having used this within a two-year timeframe, we would request a prorated reimbursement, and happy to answer any questions you might have.
Council questions?
Yes, sir.
Cindy?
First of all, I think this is a really great program. I've had one of these before in the past, and they're quite helpful, especially to new hires who are trying to make ends meet, and I find this program extremely beneficial. One of the experiences that I had was at times that the company came back and said, oh, sorry, no, no money, and then, you know, the employee slash student was out. Is there a way that they can check ahead of time to make sure that there's any money in the kitty, or is there a way to contest if the application for reimbursement is denied? I don't see that in here.
Sure. So, that's a great question. It's been some time. We've all slept since then, but we budgeted $10,000 a year for this program. It's on a first-come, first-served basis. So, we currently have two employees that have expressed interest, and I think we can be confident in committing at the application. They have to provide proof of a degree program, that it's pertinent for their line of work and that sort of thing. So, I don't think we would get into a situation where we didn't have funds available. Likely, if there's a lot of interest from other employees, we could say, we're out of what we have budgeted this year, you know, consider coming back next year. And I might add again, the way we have it structured is you can go, receive the, you enroll for class, provide proof that classes were satisfactorily complete, and then we reimburse after the fact that the student is paying upfront, and then we reimburse.
That's what should be done. I agree.
I hope it's so popular, we have to add money to the budget for it.
Hey, I hope so, too.
And that was going to be my follow-up question. Is there a way that, I mean, we've done that in other areas of the city.
Sure.
If we could shuffle money over to that program, just to accommodate and keep our employees well-trained?
I'd be happy. I hope that it's well-received. This is no surprise to you, but for the folks in the audience, and the reality is, Melanie ran some numbers, in five years, out of 170-some employees, almost half of us will be eligible to retire within that timeframe or already at retirement age. Unfortunately, not me, I have four kids, so you got me for at least 20 years or so. But, yeah, I think that we have to make the first, like anything, you have to make the trial successful. Glenn, don't screw it up. But I anticipate that, and I'd be thrilled if we had more employees use this.
Yeah. Well, like I said, you know, you'd said that, you know, if the money runs out, and like I said, I know we've been able to make adjustments in other areas, and I want to make sure that we could do that here as well.
Sure, and I'd be happy to bring that. Yes, be happy to bring that to the council.
So, okay, that's all I had. Thank you.
Counsel, any other questions?
No, sir.
Anything else? If not, I'll entertain a motion on this item.
May I make a motion that we approve the personnel policies?
I second.
Charles, second. All those in favor raise your hand. All those opposed? Excellent. Thank you, Gabe, and thanks, Melanie, as well. All right, moving forward. Item number five, presentation of comprehensive annual financial report for the year ended September 30th, 2019. And for that, our friends at Weaver and Tidwell.
Good evening. Thank you for having me here tonight to discuss the results of the external audit for fiscal year 2019. You all should have a bound report in front of you. This is the finalized report. Earlier last week, you all received the draft of the report, but there were no changes between that report and this report, other than the addition of the letterhead for our opinion letter. On page three of the report, you will note the independent auditor's report. This is actually the only information within this book that I'm responsible for as the auditors. It goes through management's responsibility, which is the fair presentation of these financial statements, as well as my responsibility as the auditor to express an opinion on the financial statements. We've issued an unmodified opinion. That's a clean opinion. It's the highest level of assurance that can be placed on a set of financial statements. Within the book, you'll note there are the government-wide statements. The government-wide statements are the fund-level statements, which include the general fund, capital projects funds, all the special revenue funds, as well as the enterprise fund, and it takes those fund-level financial statements and brings it from modified accrual, which is semi-cash basis, to what we would call accrual basis. So, it's going to include the long-term debt, depreciation, capital assets, all of those items that are not found at the fund level. Within the fund-level statements, you will note, as I mentioned, general fund, debt service fund, capital projects fund, and then all other governmental funds. So, that's going to be the police fund, street maintenance, drainage, all of those funds included in there. The city ended with a total fund balance of $27.2 million. $10.9 million of that is unassigned, and so there are no restrictions or commitments or assignments with regards to that fund balance. So, that would be open for use, to be utilized, as you all deemed necessary. So, as a council, when you're looking at what are the funds that are available to be used on capital projects or other items outside of what is in the capital projects fund, those would be available for capital use or increasing. For salaries, any of that type of things would be available there. If you move to page 66, this is the budget versus actual for the general fund itself. And so, you'll note that the city-
Hold on, give us a minute to get there.
Yeah.
Hold on a sec.
Sorry, I'm fast. Revenues, the final budget was $14.7 million. You all ended with an actual of $15.2 million. So, that was an overage of $453,000. And then expenditures were budgeted at $17.9 and ended at $16.9. So, you were under budget in expenditures of about $1.1 million. So, overall, a favorable budget versus actual variance of $1.5 million. So, looking at it from an auditor's perspective, we would note this to be a great year because you all were able to bring in revenue that exceeded what you were budgeting, but you also were able to come in under on expenditures, so conservative spending. With that, I'll turn it over to you all for any questions that you may have. I'm sure that you all have read this in its entirety over the weekend.
All right, counsel questions?
I have a question.
Yes.
On this page 66, with the expenditures, and I guess this is probably more of a question for our staff rather than you, but is it, the reason that we have not spent our budget, is that because we have projects that were not able to be completed at this time, so those expenses are actually to roll over into this fiscal year?
That's correct. Just off the top of my head, there's about 500,000 of projects that weren't expended in the last fiscal year, that when you see the modified, proposed modifications to the current year budget in March, you'll see those carried forward. So, the ones that come to mind were the food truck park. We still have expenditures to make there. The Dream Play playground project wasn't completed. All of these out of the general fund. There's a Basswood developers' agreement that's actually been carried forward two years now. And then the matching fund for the beautification along the boulevard, those are the ones that come to mind.
Yeah? Valerie?
I just have a reconciliation question. This is on page eight, the city of Saginaw's changes in net position.
Yes.
And 66. Can you, just so that I better understand-
Right.
-where we are on the final cost? So, our final budget, we spent $16 million?
Is that right?
So, on page eight, when I'm reading the net position and I'm looking under expenses-
Right.
-can you explain the difference between the 23-9 and the 16-9?
So, a couple of things is, within that governmental activities, it's going to include all other funds outside of the general fund. So, on page 66, only includes general fund, but on page eight, that would also include debt service fund, capital projects fund, and all the other governmental funds, so donations, street maintenance, drainage utility, those also are included in there. The main, the big items that are also going to be included in here that are not included on 66, depreciation expense, also pension expense and OPEB expense, all of that comes over during the Gatsby 34 conversion for the government-wide statements. So, those are going to be non-cash items that get pulled over into that expense line that you're not going to find on page 66, because those are fund-level expenditures.
So, when you say non-cash, these are liabilities, is what you're saying?
They are going to be, well, depreciation is going to be the expense that's taken over the life of the asset, so not necessarily a liability. It's just you purchased it all at the fund level, and then you've got to amortize it over the life of it, so that's included in there. And then the other items are going to be potential liabilities, pension and OPEB, but you're looking at it from a, we have to take that entire liability on at the government-wide level, but the likelihood that the city is going to take on those liabilities in one year is, you know, next to none. Everyone would have to retire for that to take place.
So, just in simple terms, if I took the line item on page eight called general administrative office expenditures, okay, expenses, $2,887, and then I flip over to 66-
Yep.
-and I see that we spent 1.8, okay? Is there a way to reconcile those two and say, here are the list of things that were not covered in the one?
Yeah, so I actually, we provide a reconciliation to Kim.
Perfect.
And so, that's something that we could also, it's, I guess it's very auditor wording, but we could go through that, too. I could tell you exactly what each of those items, but it's column-driven, too.
And I don't think we need to do that this evening.
Yeah.
I think I can follow up with staff and get that information. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. And one other thing that I wanted to point out is, Kim works very hard on this audit, and we really appreciate all of her hard work. I mean, she takes on the majority of the burden, all of our staff, asking all of the questions that they have. She has to explain every increase, decrease, so we do appreciate all of that, too.
Amen.
Yeah.
No, and Kim sat down with me and explained some things to me, and I really appreciate that. She makes this all much clearer to those of us, so. Counsel, other questions? Anything else? We good otherwise? Thank you very much.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
And there's no action on this, correct?
That's correct. No action necessary.
Excellent. Thank you. Thank you, Weaver and Tidwell. All right, moving forward. Item number six, discussion regarding scheduling council workshop meetings. City Attorney Bryn Merritt.
So, Gabe contacted me recently to point out the obvious, that our meetings are running longer and longer as we go along, and we discussed various ways to try to make the meetings more efficient, and that typically involves scheduling additional meetings to pick up some of that slack. So, I'll let Gabe offer up what he suggests is a solution, but my point to him legally is, it doesn't matter what you call it, what you call the meeting. If you have a quorum present, it's going to trigger the Open Meetings Act. We've got to post an agenda. The agenda has to identify with particularity each of the items to be discussed. So, there really are no workarounds or shortcuts to the requirement that the public be put on notice, reasonable notice of every topic to be discussed. So, we wouldn't be able to do something, or one of the questions I get frequently is, what if we call it a town hall meeting? We just call it something else, and then we can just talk about whatever we would like, and that's unfortunately not, can't be accommodated, so.
Yeah, Mayor and council, so what I would like to entertain to help facilitate a more efficient meeting, is what we're after, is maybe a change in process where we have, you know, we can find the right term, an agenda review, a pre-council meeting that starts before our six o'clock meeting. You know, in talking with Bryn and others, this is pretty commonplace in other cities, where we could go through the agenda line by line. If any council member has any question, we could address it then. There would be no action at this meeting. It's purely informational. As Bryn mentioned, it's a public meeting, so members of the public would be invited as well. And then, once we get into our six o'clock meeting, we're, everybody hopefully has the information they need, the questions they want answered, and we're able to move through the action agenda item. So, there's several cities that, you know, use this approach efficiently and well. Had talked with Councilmember Farr about, he had visited Carrollton, which Carrollton, I believe, is in Dallas County. We've established I'm not a fan of Dallas, no disrespect to Dallas, I just love the Fort Worth area. But anyway, they do a similar iteration, works well for them. I feel like council members are armed with the information they need before we get into action time, and that's all I'm recommending. You know, to the point of meeting length, staff can only control so much, and the rest is up to the council, the way the council engages in discussion and deliberation and action. So, this is just a discussion item this evening. I just want to bring that to your attention, receive feedback, and we could try a different method, we could keep going. I'm open to any feedback.
Counsel comments? Merritt?
Do you, would we be able to livestream the pre-meeting?
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, we could have the pre-meeting here, recorded.
Because that was my, would have been my objection, because it would not allow the full transparency, and it could make us look like we were making decisions ahead of time. You know, and I would, and it would cut down on our comments, so it would make us look like-
Sure.
-we didn't have anything to discuss. Yeah, let's do this, let's do this, let's do this. So, that would have been my only objection.
Yeah. And Bryn may comment on other cities?
Sure. I mean, there's various, essentially two types of methods that I've seen. Either the pre-council method that immediately precedes the regular meeting, or the process that, quick conversation with Janice about this, evidently years ago, you all used to schedule a workshop-only meeting once a month, and so that's the other method that's frequently done. Obviously, you don't have the continuity of thought, perhaps, if you separate the meeting out entirely to a different date, but that's an option as well. I'll tell you, the only other, I don't anticipate this truly being an impediment at all, candidly in Saginaw, but, you know, with the passage of the new right-to-speak law that the legislature just adopted, where you have to allow members of the public to speak either before or during an item, if you hold the meeting immediately prior to your regular meeting and you discuss everything on the agenda, technically speaking, if a member of the public not only wants to attend, which we've said is their right, they also have the right to speak and provide public comments during the workshop meeting, and that was never the case before. The cities that we represent that have the workshop meetings typically would allow the public to observe, but they would hold public comments to the regular meeting. Now, that won't be possible anymore due to this change in the law, but again, it's rather infrequent, and perhaps, you know, encouraging the public to participate more frequently would be more our concern than the other, so.
Other comments? Counsel? Cindy?
Well, Mary kind of stole my thunder, but to add to that, this kind of reminds me of the old adage of the Indian man standing there, said, only the government can cut the end off the blanket and sew it to the other end and think he has a shorter day. And I kind of think that's what we're doing with this meeting. We're going to put time in front of the meeting, thinking that we're going to have a shorter meeting when we're still investing the same amount of time. So, I'm not sure what the gain is in doing something like this.
Charles? Anything else?
That's kind of what I always think, I think, what are we going to win by having a pre-meeting?
Fair, fair enough. Valerie?
I'm thinking the same thing.
Ms. Farr?
Well, my experience in Carrollton, and this was, you know, one of the cities that I've presented in front of, it was just unique in that Carrollton approaches their workshop as a no-action period, so you don't have the gun to your head of action coming next when you're in that meeting. So, if the mayor makes the decision in the workshop that it looks like there's a lot of controversy over a subject, you're not having to table the item and prevent action. You're in a position where you're all discussing and you're talking about it amongst yourselves, and in fact, in Carrollton, they do it in a roundtable setting. It's not at the dais. So, they go into a conference room, members are allowed to go in, members of the community allowed to go into the conference room. There's not a lot of room, but they stream the meeting to the outside space, so if you wanted to sit out here in this area, you could actually watch what's going on inside the conference room. But I think what it affords the council is the opportunity to speak candidly and to speak in a setting in which each member does not feel like they have a clock on them, or that there is an action at the end of what's being discussed at that point in time, during that work session. It seemed to be very effective there in Carrollton. It allowed the mayor to better control the circumstances of each item. I think that that's something that is desperately needed here, because there are times in which we debate issues and we table them when it's not appropriately, it's not appropriate to table them in this room.
Well, coming from 183, coming down 183 West at four, five o'clock, I'm not making, I don't think I'll make it here in time for a pre-meeting, and I would like to get more information on the workshops. I think the workshops, I mean, that may be something we can look at, and, I mean, I don't know how the agenda would be set up, I mean, or if we have a workshop once a month and discuss, I don't know, future agenda. I'm not sure how that looks, but I would like to see more information on that versus the pre-meeting.
So, yes, ma'am. Go ahead, Merritt.
And I was just thinking about that before Charles spoke, because we have to make, well, a future council could, of course, change the process, but, you know, it may be difficult for some council members to get here by 5:30, and in the future also, so that might be something. I think six is already early.
No, it's good.
I mean, for me personally, it is, so-
I'm teasing.
-different people have different schedules. I think 5:30 would really be early.
And then, if we do put it in a council roundtable session like Patrick recommended, that's going to be an added expense for streaming from another area, and I don't think, I'm not sure I'm ready to approve that either.
And thanks for the feedback. I had a couple of thoughts on this. Part of this was brought on by my complaints to our city manager that our meetings are too long. I only said that partially in jest. I really was concerned that our meetings keep stretching out. I think there's several solutions to this. One is, as we mentioned, there are options for that, how it could be done logistically. When we were talking before, you could mention that maybe the city, all, the city council don't have to be there, only show up if you have questions on a certain item and you want to get more information. I would encourage also, I think as a city council, we need to do our homework a little better, become better prepared. Council meetings are not necessarily the point to find out, dig for information that you already, we already could forget from staff ahead of time, or you could know the right questions to ask if you're a little bit prepared, and myself as well. That's my, I think that would help some, too. I'd like us to look at this, because nobody enjoys a three-hour council meeting. I don't think we're good after a couple hours. I think we lose our focus, and it's very hard to maintain that, I don't want to say intensity, but just focus. So, let's continue this discussion. I don't know if we have to come up with a solution tonight. There are options, or we could go with this. I'm glad we're talking about it, and ways to make our meetings more efficient and ourselves more efficient as a council. So, I think that's really the whole focus of this, no matter how we get there, to be a more efficient council and be better, use everybody's time wisely. We're talking about, not ours, but staff's as well. We're talking about, not ours, but staff's as well. So, Gabe, anything else to add on this?
Yeah, I mean, we're happy to provide any information. You know, you might look at some of the cities we've mentioned, because they all record, so you can kind of maybe get a different perspective. You know, some cities do a workshop-only meeting once a month, where, like Councilmember Beasley mentioned, you know, it's just workshop. We kind of have workshops, which for us mean no action. In fact, we have one next, just discussion only. We're happy to do whatever the council would like, so.
Let's do a couple things. Let's get some more information on the workshop idea, and I'm very sympathetic to Charles' polite, I'm in a similar situation, I'm not around the corner. It is challenging to get here. And I would, also, if we expect the citizens to be here at five or four, or whatever, that's asking a lot as well. So any way to avoid that would be best. So, let's look into the workshop plan for now and see if, any other ideas, counsel? If you could think of anything outside of this meeting, say, hey, what about this? Let's entertain all ideas to make ourselves more efficient. And any ways to get information upfront, to, I don't know, some kind of way to, better way to communicate with staff, I don't know, just to make ourselves more efficient. So let's consider that.
Mr. Mayor, something just came to mind. I know that the district, school district, has implemented a information line and then an action line. So at one council meeting, the item is brought for information only, and then for the second council meeting, it is there for action. So that gives the opportunity for board members and ultimately us to at least have an understanding of what the public feedback might be between the time it's information and the time that it's action. That may be something to also entertain.
That's a good point. Yeah, absolutely. So, so no action tonight, let's think about this and see how we can do better. And Gabe, thank you for bringing this forward. Bren, thanks for this information. All right, moving forward, so we are up to item number seven at 6:32, recess into workshop. Item number eight, discussion regarding recommendation from citizen bond committee. But Gabe, getting an add to this, you want me to start?
Yeah, really, Mayor and council staff has no further information to present to you. We, you receive, you recall back in December, recommendations to the citizens' bond committee. The decision points before us now relate to the, what would potentially go to voters and when. So, just for your, to remind you, the city attorney will verify, I believe, our deadline for a May election. If we want to bring any bond proposition to voters in May 2020 would be February 14th. Does that sound correct? If we wanted to, you know, bring anything to voters past that, then we certainly have time to discuss. Would note that there's some timeliness of a couple of projects that are, I think the bond committee moved in priority. The Knowles section project and the fire station. Council might consider, you know, design work potentially for those projects, or bringing that to voters sooner rather than later. But this is discussion only, we want to get your feedback, no decisions. Happy to do what the will of the majority is.
Yes, so based on timing, as we have discussed, I'd like to focus this discussion on those top two, Knowles and the fire station. We have options. I know Gabe sent out a couple notes about COs, about certificates of obligation, so that's an option, but also an election is an option as well. I'd like to really focus on those, about priority, those seem to be the top priority from the bond committee and from our discussions previously. I'd like to think seriously about how we want to move forward with those quickly, how we can, what we can, what's the best course of action. And then if we have time, we can discuss any other items, but those are going to be farther in the future as well. So, moving forward, what are your thoughts, counsel, on the proposal that the city manager sent out about certificates of obligation, using those for really two things, either design only, or design and the full project? I believe Knowles and the fire station would be eligible for those. Or also, we could take, we could do design work, Knowles and the fire station in the short term, and take those to the full projects, the actual work, construction work, to the voters, either in May or in November. And I'd like to discuss those. So, counsel, what's your thoughts on those and those options? Mary? Let's start.
I like the idea of the certificates of obligation for the fire station and Knowles, mainly because they put themselves in a different category than the other items that are on the list for potential items to be put on a bond election. I consider those two items necessities, and projects that are long overdue, and projects that need to be started on immediately. So for that reason, I think the certificates of obligation would solve that problem. Then, when we bring the rest of the items that we agree on that should be on a bond election to the voters, there would be too fewer items on there that would, I think, be a positive situation, because I don't think we want to overwhelm the voters with a very long list of projects. I think the voters might be overwhelmed by that. And since all the other items on the potential list are quality-of-life items, that are nice-to-have items, that are also very important for us to have in Saginaw, but they're not absolute necessities, I think it would be good to lump all those together on the bond election. And I, you know, I think they're all very worthy of being passed. The certificates of obligation do have certain criteria that have to be met in order to have them approved by the Attorney General, and so that's a safeguard right there. We just had our finance report that showed us that we are in good financial shape to be able to issue that debt. So those are my reasons for taking those two items off, putting them on certificates of obligation for the, not just the design stage, but for the projects themselves.
Cindy?
We're still talking $22.5 million, and I don't think we should take that decision away from the citizens. That needs to go on a bond, in my opinion.
Certificate of obligations, this $22.5 million would not raise taxes, if I'm correct?
That's correct. Would not raise the current tax rate.
Yes. Which is good for me. I live here in Saginaw, as most of y'all probably do. So, we need new fire hall, I think. I just would like to make sure we've exhausted everything we can do to the old fire hall versus a new one. And, you know, I'm looking at, will the foundation on the old fire hall withstand another level? You know, put the firemen sleeping, let's say, upstairs versus downstairs where it floods every time it rains? But, yeah, it seems like the certificate of obligation is the way to go with it, to me.
Thank you, Charlie. Valerie?
Well, I feel like the voters should have the say. It's their tax dollars that's paying for this. I know we need to do something with the fire station. I have, they deserve it. I know that when it rains, it doesn't flood every time. I think the sleeping quarters have been flooded three or four times, not very often. I know water gets in there. And Knowles, I know we got to do it, because I drive down it every day. But I just think it's up to the citizens. I think they should have the say in what we do with their money.
Mr. Farr?
Yeah, we just approved meeting minutes tonight that read, "After much consideration, the consensus of the council was to delay the bond election to November 2020 to allow time to gather more information on the proposed auditorium." Now, we made that decision and we gave staff direction. I'm afraid what we're doing here tonight is we're creating confusion. A certificate of obligation means that we remove the power from the voter and we put it on this dais. And quite frankly, the way that our charter reads today, and the way that our unapproved, council-approved policies read, is that a certificate of obligation of $22 million can be approved by a majority of three sitting up here. That's unfair to the voter. So there is no way, unless we adopt council rules that say at least a supermajority can approve a certificate of obligation, will I even consider spending money in that way? And to correct the statement, we are increasing taxes. We're not increasing the rate. So increasing the rate does not mean we're not increasing taxes. We are increasing taxes, just not the rate. So, I don't know why we gave staff specific instruction two weeks ago, and now we're talking about removing $22 million worth of decision from the taxpayer, and then at the same time, wanting to break this bond up into multiple pieces. Our community is resilient, but they're not resilient enough to be asked four or five times in the span of two years for more money. Those are my thoughts.
Patrick? Mr. Beasley?
So I would agree. I think the voters need to, I think this needs to go to the voters. I think if we, I mean, if we still trying to do the May election, then we just put everything on there. The whole, I think, was it $100 million, or whatever the number was, for all of those, the top five projects, and just go to the voters and let them decide on what we should do. That is my thoughts.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah, so really, the question is, you know, do we want to break out these two, Knowles and the fire station, or do we want to keep them all together? As mentioned, we did discuss last meeting, take everything in November. And that's fine, if we want to do that. The question was, do we want to accelerate these other two items? That's really the question. If we don't, that's fine, we can continue working toward a November election. If that's the decision, I would certainly encourage us to look hard about doing a CO for the design work, to get a jump on design work for the Knowles and the fire station, but we can discuss that at another meeting. So, how does the council feel? Do we have any, I've heard from a couple folks, do the other folks have any appetite for breaking out Knowles and the fire station from the rest of the bond? That's really the question number one. Mary?
Well, I think we've all answered that. I am for that. You know, I think they're health, safety-related, and the other items are not, so it's a logical break there. And in my mind, they're necessities, so that's a way that we could get those things done that are long overdue. And that we do have the financial capacity to do this. It does have to be approved by the Attorney General. We are a conservative financial city, and we've handled our finances quite well over the years, and will continue to do so.
Cindy, your thoughts on breaking those two out?
I'm inclined to respect the time and the effort that was put in by the bond committee. And if, I think I saw Travis here earlier, correct me if I'm wrong, I think you talked about the first five items, and I'm trying to find that list of those first five items. And to be quite honest, I would, and I consider the first five items to include the breakout of the three items in my item number two, and I would support putting priority one, two, and three on a bond in May.
Refresh our memory, what's one, two, and three, please?
That would be the central fire station, the three phases for Noel, and the combination library and senior center, because with the exception of the fire station, not only did the bond committee dedicate Monday evenings for six weeks of their time, and that was a volunteer service that they put forward, they put a lot of effort into researching this for us. And also, the citizen summit a couple summers ago. I think doing those three priority projects is respectful of the input that we asked of our citizens, and I think to do anything outside of that would be kind of a slap in the face to them. I think we need to accept the recommendations by our citizens, because we answer to them.
Mr. Beasley, Mr. Tucker, sorry.
It's Charles's of Charles. Yeah. I agree with Cindy. You know, we ask these people to do this for us, and then we're going to say, maybe, maybe not? I think we need to take that into consideration. Because the next time we ask the citizens to help us out, are they going to be as willing to do it? If we're not going to do what they tell us to do? So, but I agree with Cindy.
If we break out Knowles and the fire station, how are we not doing what they ask us to do? Those are their top two priorities. I'm confused.
I'm talking about not doing the whole list. I'm just talking about those top three priority items, not the whole list of now seven.
And we would do the whole list at some point, but prioritize the first two, that's the question. I don't see how that is a slap in the face to anyone.
Well, I know that we added an item to the end of the list that the bond committee specifically said not to add. That was not a requirement for the citizen through the summit, and it was not a requirement based on the opinion of the bond committee.
My question stands, how does breaking off Knowles and the fire station do any of that that, you know, go against what the bond committee said? I'm trying to understand, because we're not talking about the other...
The bond committee recommended the first five items.
Okay.
And I'm just saying, to keep the cost of the bond down, let's go with the first three.
Okay.
Which is five items.
Okay. Valerie?
I feel the same way about the bond. I mean, my thing is that we haven't finished that other bond yet, because we're waiting on bridge stuff, which I understand, and people have made mention of it, and they've been talking about it a lot. But I would go with the first three, other than bond. I think that would be, and let them vote and decide.
Okay. Patrick?
Yeah, it's funny how we make our dreams smaller and smaller. Back in August, we all sat in this room and said, do we want a small bond program, or do we want a, we want a $100 million bond program to address what Saginaw will be in 20 years? And to the person sitting on this dais, we all agree that a $100 million bond program is what we wanted to pursue. And we said that because we saw Saginaw in 20 years. But what I see happening now is that we get closer to bond time, and we're trying to put all this stuff in a smaller box. I think what we said last week, or week before last, that we want to take a careful look at what all of our opportunities are to see what Saginaw is in 20 years, push this thing back to November. It's going to be a risk, but you know what? If we fail this bond in November, we didn't do our job. But if we're going to try and hurry this along and just get two things under the wire for a May election in which we've got a call in three weeks, I think we're doing the whole community a disservice, not just the bond committee. I think by looking at this, looking at every opportunity we've got to maximize and leverage opportunities that are available to us in the community is the way to do it. And folks, this offer from these two entities for $10 million to infuse into our bond isn't going to stay there. So if we don't want to take advantage of that, I think it's a shame. I'm just telling you, $10 million is a lot of money, and it's been offered to us to consider, and it's only been offered to us to consider for a short period of time. I don't think it's going to last long.
But I have a question.
Sure.
I won't interrupt you. But didn't the bond committee, didn't they say they didn't want it there?
No.
Travis, can we call, can we ask him? Travis, he was the chairman of the committee.
Yes. And I have written documentation from Rick Russell that is contrary to what you've just said, so.
Okay, so Travis did, what he's talking about is the YMCA, the school district, and the city coming together for the auditorium. Did the bond committee want that on the agenda?
Well, that was brought in late in the game of what we've already discussed.
End of October.
And what we were discussing, and doing all of our planning and stuff like that, and a majority of the committee members did not want to go that route. They discussed different implications on what would that do to our seniors, though they had programs and stuff that would incorporate the senior programs, but would that be a cost to them that they're receiving now for what they're doing? And we did look at the aesthetics of how it would save the city in the long run, based upon the why, being able to do and providing all the maintenance to the building and all that kind of stuff. It wouldn't be a burden to the city.
It wouldn't, or it would be?
It wouldn't, the way it was discussed to us. But then, too, that piece of property that could go to somewhere else, or some other business that can come in there, you're losing out on taxes that could be part of that. So, I mean, we looked at different things like that, and we saw, for what was brought in front of us, that a combination of like a senior library, or something to that route, would be more beneficial for our citizens. We were looking outside of what was beneficial for the school district, because that was more brought to us of, this will be very good for our school districts to have an auditorium and things like that. But looking at the bigger picture, and the short time that we had looking at it, we looked more toward other routes than the YMCA.
I have one question. Did y'all even discuss or even think about the city and the school going together? I know, nobody's against an auditorium, I don't think.
No.
I think the big question is, is that nobody wants to be in with the YMCA, and I think, and citizens have told me that upfront, and I understand that they're willing to put in 5 million, but...
Let them come forward and speak. Let those citizens come forward and speak. Are they here?
No.
That whole group out there is here to talk in favor of this auditorium.
I'm not against an auditorium.
Thank you for showing up tonight.
I'm not against an auditorium.
I think you're against what it takes to put it there.
No, I'm not.
Okay.
Why can't the city, why can't we work out something with the city that we pay the 17 million?
All I have to say is, it's my turn to speak.
Okay.
And I'm going to say that the mayor and the city manager were introduced to the YMCA project in August, August the 20th. You were not introduced to the project until the end of October in your last meeting. Okay? So there were two and a half months that went by that groups here at the city knew about that opportunity, but it was not brought to you until the very end of October. I'm curious about that. So what I'm saying is, it seems like there is a force against it, and there's a force for it. I'm very well-connected to this community, as you can see out there, and I have heard every voice in that audience tell me that this is the best thing for this community. So I have to stand with them.
But you're talking about an auditorium.
And to operate it.
Okay. Why can't the city operate it?
It's extremely expensive. The same reason the school district doesn't want to operate it.
Mr. Mayor, if I may speak.
Sure, Gabe.
So you're aware of the YMCA, nobody expected the proposal that came late summer? The presentation that was shared with the bond committee was sent out to the council November 6.
And you received my feedback, and I have the timing logged, which is two meetings deep into these meetings with this committee, and that was not shared with anybody?
Yep. So that presentation was received, there was a number of questions, and the direction was to bring that to the attention of the bond committee to consider. There are no details regarding this proposal. Where we left off at our last council meeting is that there would be questions from the city council for me to submit to the YMCA and receive an answer.
No, for you to meet with the district and the YMCA.
Okay.
Yes.
So I have sent those questions that I've received from city council members.
Okay.
Probably the biggest one for everybody in the room is if this were to go to voters, you hold that authority, not me, to send that question to voters, would Saginaw residents pay a discounted rate?
That's a deal point. All a deal point.
Right.
So what I'm saying... How you progressed in those negotiations?
Yep. Just let me know. Can I finish?
Since you're talking on my time, I guess I'll let you.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate that. You're a heck of a guy, and for the record, had a good lunch with you earlier this week. I appreciate that. Thank you. I'm a happy guy, folks.
Okay, let's move forward.
Okay. And here's where we're at. I've sent those questions that are questions for all of us. I have yet to receive answers. When we receive answers, it's going to be sent out to the entire city council. We can send that out to the bond committee if that's your wish. There's just not many known at this point, you know. To Councilmember Tankersley's point, if the council wanted to consider a auditorium-only proposal with the city and the school district, we can certainly do that, you just have to let me know. So to say that we haven't provided the information to y'all is not fair. I don't have any information, answers to your questions, and as soon as we get them, we'll send them right out to you.
So first of all, Gabe, I'm referring to events that occurred between August 20 and the end of October. I'm not talking about events that occurred since last meeting. Okay? And the reason that this is so attractive to us, Travis, and I had mentioned this to both you and Rick sitting in the audience that evening, is that it offers an opportunity for us to reclaim the existing recreation center, changing the cost for a new library from $20 million to $6 million, and that's where we save money. What winds up happening is essentially we wind up with a brand-new state-of-the-art recreation center. We wind up with a relocated library in a building three times its existing size. We wind up with a brand-new public works building that will take the place of the existing library. Those three things all happened for $25 million. The way you guys moved forward through the process gets us a brand-new library and a brand-new public works building for $30 million. So which do we want? Do we want a brand-new recreation center, a library three times its size, a brand-new, essentially relocated and refit, public works facility for 30 million, or for 25 million, or do we want two buildings for 30?
Well, I mean, ultimately, being able to reuse what we have, if we can, would be the best object goal.
Was that presented to you, I guess, is what I'm asking? The reason it wasn't presented is why?
Well, we were presented with, our options on the bond committee was just the new construction of what we can do, and just some options of, like, one of the differences was having a standalone library, a standalone senior center, or adding the senior center to the back of the rec building. We were just making decisions and judging on the information that was provided to us at the time. And we weren't brought to, I mean, different things, of different ways that you can go around in the city to do it.
Well, sir, I'll tell you that I made these comments to the city manager well in advance of that meeting, so I'm curious as to why that information wasn't shared.
Councilmember Farr, and council as a whole, you have as much information on the YMCA proposal as I do.
I'm not talking about the YMCA proposal, I'm talking about the reuse of these facilities.
I have never been asked by the council to engage a professional architect to propose that. Now, do I think, given your line of work, your estimates are accurate? I do. I have no reason professionally, I'm not an architect or a, you know, building person, but...
When you were making all these totals up here...
Sorry?
When you were doing all these totals just a minute ago, wasn't there a $14 million difference that it was going to save us? Is that what you're saying? I was trying to keep it all...
No, it's a $5 million savings.
$5 million savings?
Yes.
Okay, and so, well, why did it go from 20 to 6? You said 20 million to 6 million for the library or something, to redo it? Or you redid everything?
Yes. So right now, the library project, the senior center project, and the project that would convert the existing library into the public works facility is 30 million.
Okay.
Okay?
Okay.
So if we put $12 million towards a new recreation facility in the school district, and the YMCA put five each, that's 22 million towards a new recreation facility that we only pay 12 million for, and we own the building.
Okay, but you were going to save 5 million, that's what you said, right?
That's right, so that's 12 million.
You took that 5 million, knocked the YMCA out, put it on the other one, and you got to take care of it.
You still have to operate it.
I know you do.
And the operating costs...
But it'll make money.
I don't understand where you're coming from, Valerie.
Okay, our rec center now, our little rec center that y'all keep referring to, it makes like a, what is it, a half a million a year?
No, it operates at a loss.
Is it, is it close to that, or something like a half a million dollars a year or something?
In revenues.
Okay, so if we have, if that's our little one, and we have a big one, more people are going to come, more money's going to be generated, and then you got the auditorium, and the school's going to put in 5 million.
But who's going to operate the pool?
Okay, it's going to cost some expenses, just like everything else, but let me ask you this, how does it sound to buy the city to build a building, and we don't know who's going to own the property, if it's the city or the YMCA, whoever's going to buy that, and then we're going to let them run it, close our stuff down, get rid of our employees that we've had on staff for a long time? We're not going to make any money from it? They're not going to pay any taxes on it? So how is that a good, sound business? I mean, you're going to save 5 million, but in the long run, are you really going to save 5 million?
You're not saving, you're saving, you're saving the risk.
Okay, but I still say, I still think it's better that the city build the building, the city run the building, and then we have something.
We do have something. We own the asset. Anyway, those are deal points.
Do we have more questions for Travis?
I think we're fine, Travis.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. Appreciate you stepping up for this.
So, Mr. Mayor, just one comment, not related to the previous discussion. We're all friends, for the room, and my mother who's watching. My annual evaluation is next, so hopefully we're all friends after that. I'm just joking. Just for the crowd, what I want to mention is a couple things, the point of design. So let's say voters in May, which is as soon as election available to us, approve a project. So public projects unfortunately don't happen like that. If they did, then I would be in a different line of work, probably, wouldn't need staff and other people. I want to come back to the point of design. We've kind of discussed a couple projects that are elevated in priority due to drainage and flooding issues, fire station in the north section of Knowles. I want to maybe get your feedback before we move on regarding those points that regardless of the timing, when it may go to voters, on those two projects, I would strongly urge the council that we start design now, so that whenever we go to the council, whether it's May 20, November 20, May 21, we have construction documents in hand. Should voters approve the project, we can go out for bid and start construction, because design of public projects takes time, and a lot of planning and coordination, and to the extent that we can minimize that, so that when people exercise their right and vote, we can deliver quickly.
Thank you, Gabe. Patrick, do you have anything else?
No, that's all I had. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Beasley?
Ooh.
I know.
So, so once again, I think we should do the CO for the design phase. Let's get that design going, and we just take it to the voters. I mean, we can change that list up of the five items. I don't know where the auditorium and all of that fits in on those priority lists, but...
I mean, we don't have to solve that tonight.
I mean, I don't like the way the five items look, but, yeah, we just take it to the voters. I mean, we talked about that $100 million, that 20-year plan. We do that, I think we just continue down that road, but we do use the CO if that's our option for the, to get the design work started.
All right, yes, Mary. Go ahead.
I wanted to make a few points more clear than I did before. I like everything that is suggested from the committee, and I want all of them to be approved by the voters. And I am extremely excited by the Y auditorium project. That came up late, that came up very late. You know, that committee may have had a different opinion about that if they had had more time to study it and been able to ask more questions, et cetera. The reason I think we should take the fire station and Knowles, multiple reasons, one good outcome of that would be more likely to have these other items approved by the voters. These two items fit the criteria to be put in certificates of obligation. They would then not have to be put on the list of, for the bond election. The voters would not be as overwhelmed by the amounts of money and by the amount of projects. So I think all of those projects would have a better chance of being approved. And if we added the auditorium and the Y onto the bond election list, like Patrick said, we can also reduce it by using the existing rec center for the library, et cetera. So there's another thing that we can take off of the list for the bond election. I don't understand why that isn't a good idea. I think it would be a win-win, where we would be more likely to have the voters approve all of the items on the bond election, hopefully the auditorium and the YMCA would be added to that list, and we could get a head start on the fire station and Knowles, which are health and safety issues. None of the others are health and safety issues. And we could, you know, get started on something that is way past due, should have been done a long time ago.
Thank you, Mary. So Cindy, you have a question?
I had an opportunity to talk to Kim Quinn, our financial director, between the last meeting and this one, and one of the reasons that I'm in favor of putting those first three priorities, which is actually five projects, on the voter, on the bond for the voters, and I know Kim could probably explain it better. Yeah, I know what you said made sense, but I can't put it into words right now. Do you mind taking a moment to explain that about, you know, the May and the November bond election?
Explain the difference between the COs and the GOs, or the timing?
The timing.
The, I guess the big issue on the timing is if you want to, if you want to maintain your debt side of the tax rate, you've got debt rolling off in fiscal year 2021. So you need to have a, if you want to keep the debt rate level, you've got capacity in there, because we're paying off a big chunk of debt, I think it's about $400,000 on the debt side. But in order to do that, we need to set the tax rate this summer for next year. So if you don't, if we have not sold a portion of debt in this fiscal year, you're going to lose that capacity. I'm not saying you can't do it, you still can certainly do it, it's just the debt side of your tax rate will go down for a year, assuming that then the bonds are sold in the next year, and then they'll raise back up. So instead of keeping your debt service side of the tax rate smooth, you'll see a dip, the tax rate will go down, and then assuming that the bonds, the projects are approved by voters, and that y'all decide to issue the debt, it will jump back up. So that's normally when you hear Louis talk about it, when you hear our financial advisors talk about it, that we, most cities like to keep that smooth and maintain that capacity when you're about to, when capacity is about to be freed up.
Thank you, Kim. Is that... Is that what you needed, Cindy? Okay.
That's what, that's what I wanted to say, but didn't have the capacity.
Great.
And I'd also like to...
Kim's very good at that, too.
And I'd also like to add, the second point is, I'm so afraid of us getting distracted by shiny objects. We, again, we had the citizen summit two years ago, the auditorium was not even anywhere close to being mentioned on that, by that group of citizens, again, who volunteered their time. And, you know, I think we just need to stick with the plan and not be distracted by shiny objects just because it looks cool, or maybe even if it saves us a few million dollars. I mean, we'll save even more by not building it. The residents of Saginaw, even though we're going to be paying the lion's share of that building, will be the lowest priority on the list for the U.S. the lowest priority on the list for the use of the nadatorium, because it's gonna go to the school district. School district has passed a half billion dollar bond a couple years ago, why can't they shell out, you know, 22 million dollars for a nadatorium? That's just a drop in the block, in the bucket for 500 million dollars.
Thank you, Cindy. So we've heard several things, we've been rounding around on this, I've got a couple of points, and I think I've got, I think we've got some direction. So one is, we discussed two weeks ago to go to the voters with the full bond package in November, I heard from most folks that they would like to stay with the November timing, is that, is that a consensus to stay with the November timing? The reason I'm bringing that up is because we've got time to discuss what goes on that bond election, if we go in November, if we go in May, we do not, that's why we brought this discussion this evening. If we go in November, we've got time to discuss several, several things to go on that. So I think that is consensus, but I wanna check with council, is that consensus, stay with, stick with November plan, it was good enough two weeks ago, if we want to stick with that, that's great, that makes it pretty clear for staff. Charles, Patrick?
Yes, sir.
Okay. You guys okay with that?
Okay.
November it is, that's clear.
Just to be clear, so, to Kim's point, our tax rate as proposed would go down, we would have to advertise in November, a tax rate increase on all projects, which is different than what's being proposed, but if that's the direction, that's what we'll do.
It's the voters' decisions.
It's the voters' decision, that's...
Okay, so, then we, we've got time, so we do that, we can discuss at future meetings the potential of doing design work ahead, doing a CO for design work, that's a discussion for another day, but that's an option as well, I'd like staff to explore that and maybe bring that to us at some point. So, definitely wanna talk about that, but I've got some people that wanna speak, you're happy to speak, I would love to hear you, I've got three cards, other folks can speak as well, if you still wanna speak, please let me know, I've got a Stephen Coleman, I know Ward Coleman, I don't know Stephen Coleman, but, come on up, if you wanna talk, Ward, please.
Thank you for this opportunity to speak to y'all, obviously, first of all, I'd like to acknowledge all the children or kids, young adults that are here today, they're from Boswell, Saginaw, and Chisholm Trail swim teams, don't underestimate the importance of a nadatorium, but I think they should be congratulated for coming out tonight, in support of things that they're passionate about. Secondly, y'all talking about the growth and 20-year plan, Saginaw's growing, I've done minimal research, everything says it's growing, where are you gonna teach all these kids how to swim? That ain't gonna cut it. 20 years, or 15 years ago, eight years, or about 13 years ago, I had to go to Keller, or I had to go to the YMCA, which isn't even in Saginaw, you know, we need something here, we're growing, we need something bigger. Safety of the children, my daughter's working on her gold award for the Girl Scouts, it's gonna be an adult swim safety, kids swim safety program that she's working on, and she may be reaching out to you on how to get that done. The TCC had a program that several of these kids swim in, it was a club swim team, the wheel of TCC, they got tired of taking this company's money, and now all those kids have to drive down to Texas Wesleyan, parents have to drive down to Texas Wesleyan. You build this nadatorium, it's not just gonna sit there and people pay for swim lessons, you're gonna have big club swim teams come in and want to pay you thousands of dollars, I don't know if it's a monthly, or yearly, or whatever, but...
It was 10,000 a month.
10,000 a month is what they paid, TCC, and TCC decided they didn't want that money anymore. Lots of factors, I say out of people's business, I don't know why, maybe they had another program that was paying them more money, but it isn't gonna sit there empty if you get a, a club team in there, 10,000 dollars a month, right?
Yes.
I don't know, I mean, you do the math, I'm not good at math, that, but that sounds like a win. The, if you build a nice, big swimming pool, you know, Wilkerson Grinds down in Fort Worth is nice, the Keller is nice, but, you know, the one in Capel, the one in Rockwall, the one in Farmer's Branch, I've been all over this place for these club swim teams, you build a nice one, you can hold UIL swim meets here, you can hold UIL district, you can hold UIL regionals, you don't wanna talk about tax money, imagine 500 kids and their parents get done after swimming for four, five, 10 hours, they're gonna wanna eat, I've, I've spent money in Rockwall on a hotel, I've spent money in Capel for a hotel, it generates money, it's more than just what y'all think of, oh, it's a swimming pool, but if you gotta build it right, you gotta build it big. The, the, and you can become a recognized swimming program, Mansfield, they dominate at this regional level that several of these kids are going to next week, they've got Mansfield, that's a place you need to go look and see on how to build a swim pool. The, the, in a, in addition, just, you know, I like the way you're thinking, Ms. Copeland, you know, that CO to get things done, and then have a smaller bond package to present to your people, sitting there listening to you thinking, it's like, ah, you know, I don't know a whole lot about a lot, but, you know, we've elected y'all to make decisions, she's making a decision, we're gonna do this and present something smaller to the people, if it qualifies for it, we're not breaking any rules and not doing anything wrong, seems like a good idea, 'cause then you're, hey, there's more than one way to skin a cat, and you're thinking, hey, do it this way, and I can get more approved over here on the, on the downside, so that's on a separate topic, but, you know, that's what I had to say, thank y'all very much for your time.
Thank you, Ward. Kate Coleman?
Thank you, um, thank you to my dad for hearing us up about this, and I would like to address the council, because, yes, I've been swimming for the better part of about a decade now, I've been in club teams, I'm captain of the Saginaw swim team, I've been around, I've seen hundreds of pools, I teach lessons at the rec center during the summer, I've been there for a year, I'm going out next year again. I know what happens to kids who don't know how to swim, bad things happen to them, with the, with the growth of our community, families are coming in with small children, they're gonna be having families there, people are moving in, if kids don't know how to swim, just, it's heartbreaking, I'm sure just about every person in this room has children, has grandchildren, has nieces, nephews, friends with children, and if anything bad would happen to them, especially in a way that is so preventable, such as learning, teaching kids how to swim and how to be safe around the water, no one would argue that's a good idea, but when it comes to money, people, they have, they don't, they wanna find ways to not do it, but when it comes to like, kids in this room, every single one of us has swam at TCC for the past four years or less, and we've taught them how to swim well, so if we start that younger, it's able to prevent more injuries and more tragic deaths from happening. It's vitally important for kids to just have a place to be able to go, especially a big place, where you can have staff there that's like, well-trained, lifeguards, and if you build a pool like that, not only will like, as my father said, be able to bring in inordinate amounts of people coming in for meets and spending money hotels and restaurants, and people buying their team snacks at the grocery store, but you'll also be able to spend, create more jobs in the area for those people who are like, hiring lifeguards, hiring swim instructors, hiring managers, hiring like custodial staff there. I know for a fact that even though my coach couldn't be here this evening, she has said multiple times that she would quit her job as a teacher in a second just to manage a new nadatorium, she would love to just be able to do that all day. I'm sure every single kid in here would love to be able to have, hold a summer job at this nadatorium, in which, this nadatorium has been talked about within our community, within the club teams, and within high school teams, and at meets, for the better part of years. I was told that there would be a, a nadatorium built by the time that I was done with my senior year, I'm a senior, nothing's happened, and I was told that I'd be able to swim in that, and be able to host meets, and been able to do things, and like, build our teams bigger and bigger, 'cause TCC just can't hold us anymore, and TCC, like, it's eight lanes, and then there's like, Boswell has 40 swimmers, Saginaw's got 20, almost 30, Chisholm's got 20, almost 30, it's like, it's not big enough to contain us anymore, and when you've got things like Off the Deep End Aquatics, that teaches the lessons where I worked during the summertime, and you've got like, places like Sigma, which is the club team that I've swam at for many years, they want places to move in, when Sigma had to leave TCC because of all of the stuff that they put them through, kids were heartbroken, I would, I would drive 40 minutes to an hour to get to Texas Wesleyan after school, rush hour, to try and swim in the evenings, and just having a place that's in Saginaw, you've got a big, growing community that wants to swim and wants to learn to swim, it's vitally important for that to come up as soon as possible, because without that, then you're hindering kids from being able to do the thing that they might be the best thing in the world at. I've got kids in this audience that like, didn't know how to swim at all when they came their freshman year, and now like, they're, they're qualifying for regionals, or almost qualifying for regionals, doing the 500 and the Butterfly, that's like, the hardest thing in the world to do, these kids have talent, and I know that like, just, not only like, building that talent and like, giving kids like, the necessary tools they need to survive, it's super just, it's heartbreaking for kids not to be able to explore that, so, and when you've got, we just got back from our district swim meet, and Decatur is like, one of the most dominant forces, they're a town of 6,000 people, and they've got a nadatorium there, a very nice nadatorium there, and they've been going at it since they were children, since they were like, like, that's the reason they're so good, and like, having that strong of swimmers in the community just brings the community closer together athletically, mentally, just, it fosters more of a, more cohesive community and a safer community, so I would just, please, keep this nadatorium on the bond and get it out there to the communities that can vote on it, 'cause I know for a fact that every single person in this room, when it, if we're old enough, when it comes time, we will vote for it, our parents will vote for it, our friends and family will, it's something the community needs and wants, so please, keep it out there.
Thank you, Kate.
Thank you.
Hi, I just wanna say, like, they pointed out that so many kids would benefit from this, and all of us kids, as you can see, there are so many of us here, we would benefit that, from that, but also, everyone else in the community, if, as Ms. Valerie pointed out, if we, Saginaw decided to own it, we could open it to the community, and like, swimming has been proven by so much that it helps with elderly people, because it's easy on their joints, and I know, like, for me personally, I'm a bigger person, and so I can't run as fast as everyone else, I'm not really like, physically inclined or anything like that, but I'm on the swim team, and I swim the 500 and the 200, which is one of like, the hardest things to do, and it's like, it helps so much, and swimming, for us kids, it's helped grow us, it's helped make us better, into better people, and like, I know, like, every year, whenever we do introductions for the swim team, we say, we aren't a team, we're more of a family, and that's what I think this nadatorium will help do, is help build people more into a family, and for like, a lot of kids who don't come from much, if they can go and swim and be around people their own age, and do something that they're passionate about, they're going to want to do that all the time, and next thing you know, you might have the next Michael Phelps, like, there is a kid on the Boswell team who is training for the Olympics right now, but they can't do that as much as they would like to, because we are squeezed into a tiny pool with so many other people in there, and I'm a coach at Sigma, and I have these itty-bitty children that are like, two and three years old, and they're so happy to get into this pool and learn how to swim properly, and we have about, almost 200 kids at Sigma, from 4:30 to 7:30, in and out of this pool, which is a lot of kids, and they're, those kids, those parents, the kids, the parents of those kids pay up to about 200 dollars a month for each kid, just for that individual club, which is a lot, and I think if we decided to build that nadatorium, we could lower the prices, so people who don't come from much can still go and be active and part of the community.
So are you saying, are you saying that the city of Saginaw should own this, or the, the whole YMCA thing?
I think the city of Saginaw should own it, because that way Saginaw will be able to get its money back and more.
Thank you.
That's all the cards I have, unless anybody else wants to speak on this item? Sir? Yes, sir, you can. Just introduce yourself, please.
Hi, I'm Lance Cleveland, I am Chisholm Trail's swim coach, but before I go into why an adatorium really serves well for the school district, I can honestly also speak as someone y'all raised, I grew up here, I grew up on South Hampshire for 14 years before my parents took us out to Lake Country, but I graduated Boswell, I helped bring the swim team back, remember when they, they got rid of the swim team, for the football team, I remember the athletic director at the time, late 80s, we had a swimmer go to Texas, TCU, and Florida State, he got rid of it, Coach Averit was the coach at the time, remember her biology? Anyway, she would no longer come back and help us, we had to create a club at Boswell, we created a club, that club kept going, thank goodness, Coach Hudson came in in 96?
Ninety.
Ninety-eight, took over, kept that thing going, it's gotten big. Growing up, for me, swimming, all the cool places to go to swim, you had to go east, you had to go north, that was the Colony, Marcus, Keller didn't have anything back then, Decatur didn't have anything back then, look at us in 2020, Decatur, guys, remember, we destroyed Decatur in everything we ever did, Boswell did, always, and now look at us, we can't even compete with them in swim. I know it's a shiny new thing, and I know your voters didn't ask for this, I get that, I respect that completely, and I like your idea of letting voters do that, what I'm afraid is, it's just wasn't an idea that was out there, it's unfortunate, it was an idea that wasn't put forth. A pool can be a lost leader, you bring in something big like this, you put it with a rec center, that is gonna generate, yes, you can start charging to let other swim clubs use it, having, running a deal, oh god, I got ideas too, what that coach wants to do, I wanna do too, trust, we all wanna do it, but you can keep that thing running, not only that, what about elementary education? I was a PE teacher in this district for 13 years, I had nowhere to take 5th grade for state mandated objectives to teach them water safety, you just don't have anywhere, so what do you do? You teach it on the floor, in the gym, pretend pool, don't step in the water, that's what we got, but anyway, let's get real, when it comes down to you wanting to bring Saginaw into 20 more years from now, you wanna bring in new people, you want people to come and move here, give them something to move here for, we are losing in activities for young people. The district has had to partner with all these different things to bring in soccer, flag football, all the different things that they're bringing in to help, help us compete with the bigger areas that have lots of money, the one thing that's definitely missing on this side of town, you gotta go to Keller, Wilkerson Grinds, come on, that thing is old, it was old whenever I was swimming in it, I graduated in 92, so, no, Wilkerson Grinds is old, having something over here, big and new like that, people gonna wanna move in, it, it can draw people, senior citizens, I, I don't, I don't know what we're thinking on that, that, because water aerobics, I lifeguarded at TCC way back when, I lifeguarded water aerobics, it was huge, popular, I'm sure still would be, there's plenty of ways you can use a pool, and there's a lot of ways to make money at it, it would definitely help the school district, it's gonna help your residents, along with the kids in the district, your residents will get a lot out of this, don't, don't think they won't, yeah, it doesn't bring in a whole bunch of money, but it brings people to your community, it makes people realize, hey, this is a place I can make home, I've got a cool place like that, I remember going to see Frisco's, I'm gonna stop right after this, I watched Frisco's, I was... I remember going to see Frisco's, I'm gonna stop right after this. I watched Frisco's, I was taking a master's course at UNT and we went and saw Frisco's being built. That thing was amazing. Have y'all seen it since it opened? That thing is beautiful and what it brought into that community. It made the people moving into that community think, I've got a gym right here. This town has got what I like. Just an idea, something that that auditorium could be a nice shiny thing.
May I ask, may I address your comment?
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Sir. My objection to this was going into this and letting the Y uh, have the auditorium.
Yes, ma'am.
Uh, you know, and, and I agree with all the comments, you know, I taught my daughter at seven months old to start getting used to the water, you know, and I worked with her every year. Um, you know, by the time she was a year and a half, she fell into the pool and she was able to save herself by monkey walking around the edge of the pool. Uh, I'm old, as you can tell, and yes, water aerobics is very attractive to me and I agree with that. The problem that I had with having the Y bring this in is that we would be paying the lion's share. The citizens would have last option to the pool, even though we're paying the most. Our senior citizens would not have, you know, choices at the pool. Um, I am not opposed to the city owning this auditorium and going into partnership with the school district. I am opposed to the Y.
I respect that. I can respect that. And as an employee for the school district, I will say nothing more to the deal with the Y and any dealings on that because I have no play in that.
And like Councilman, uh, Councilwoman Tankersley said earlier, our employees would lose their jobs. With the auditorium and the city owns it, our employees would be able to keep the jobs. And if we got young people like this that want to help with the maintenance and the pools.
Details in the deal and that is something that you would think that getting with, I'm not, I'm not going to make eye contact and get into any kind of weirdness there. Um, I'm just saying, working it with.
Glad some of us know you.
That's not a good thing. But working it out with the district, it seems like that would be the smartest idea, just between the district and the city. That does seem like the smart idea, just saying, but that's just my opinion and that's all it is, my opinion.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Coach. Thank you, sir. We've got time for one more. Somebody else want to? Mr. Estes? Introduce yourself, please.
Hello, my name is Jacob Estes. I'm a junior at Saginaw High School. Um, something previously brought up was about water safety. Um, currently, or not currently, over the summer, I actually worked as a lifeguard. And something that I did is I worked at the Boys and Girls Club, uh, the Panther Branch in Southern Fort Worth. Uh, an area, low income area where a lot of these kids go there in the summer so they can eat and in the summer they can learn how to swim. Um, we had walls lined with life jackets and every single one of them, every single one of those kids, but about two of those kids was wearing a life jacket up to their neck, sitting there just kind of watering all around. They had nowhere to go to, to learn how to swim. And they would get up to the age of ten, twelve, where then they would be allowed to go into the deep end as long as they pass their water test from swimming from one short end to the pool to the other without touching the bottom. That was about three, five yards. Not a very long distance. Most of them couldn't do it. Whenever you start putting these kids in situations where they're growing up, they're going with their friends, they're going to the lake, they're getting into dangerous situations, like Coach Cleveland um, had just mentioned. There are kids that, uh, I'm sorry, I just slipped my mind, but there are kids out there that don't really have anywhere to go. Having this in here would be not only beneficial to these kids learning how to swim, but their safety would improve. Uh, at TCC, um, like she said, I'm sorry, I forget your name. These kids here, little bitty itty kids at Sigma swim that are learning how to swim, go to a facility where the lifeguards are college students making thirteen and a half an hour to sit on stands and look at their phones. There are upwards to about forty to sixty kids in the water at a time with about five instructors, with two lifeguards on each side sitting picking at their nails. I've been. Uh, this is at TCC. I've been personally in that water, swimming a set, noticed one of our newer swimmers struggle and one of the other swimmers having to grab them and take them to the wall while the life, the lifeguards there sit and do nothing. I believe that's something that the city of Saginaw could prevent. Having this auditorium would create a safer environment for kids learning how to swim and kids training to be better athletes. Thank you.
Thank you, Jacob. All right, folks, thank you very much. Thank you, appreciate y'all coming out tonight. So at seven thirty-five, we will convene back into regular session. Uh, item number ten is executive session. So at seven thirty-five, we will reconvene into executive session in the back pursuant to, this is government code five five one dot oh seven for annual evaluation and contract for city manager. We will return to adjourn.
Thank you all for coming.
Uh, yeah, I have, actually. We've just been waiting. So we'll get it worked out. Yeah, no problem. Just let us down. I don't know why you said we'll chat up. Make sure Cody gets in contact with you, Mark. Anything else? See, I'll leave. Good evening, gentlemen. Do we find this?
It's just. We can't say.
No, 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 it's not. I'm, I'm just saying. I suspect they'll contract.
She wrote. Did she find a bill in CCA portion as well?
Maybe not. I haven't looked at it. But the sound portion is fine.
I'll check with CCA. Well, that's not me, I was. Yeah, that's okay. It's good driving down. So we're contacting the, the management, southern. Getting ready to start the tuns.
You got fifteen feet for animal.
It's just, it's kind of a need.
And it's kind of, I've never seen that.
I think Tommy told me that, that he came out. Yeah, it's kind of.
He said they broke the bull chain. Fix that for the finish.
Okay, I've never even seen that. Yeah, this tunnel's going in.
Put those box tops in. Two, seven. Land the pit. Just south of, um, the water.
I mean, it's, it's kind of amazing. Shouldn't have been, we didn't talk about it. That it's. Can you allow her? Yeah, isn't that me? Here totally seems that there's no. Yeah, you should brush away. Yeah, the guy's at Decatur. Same, same crew though, if you had a job at Harvard where you're going down there, they'd be five feet. They basically had a welder on site because they kept. Yeah, and so you were just standing there. So yeah, I'm hoping I'll get to it later in the next part. All righty, it's a winner. All righty, get to it, unfortunately.
We didn't pay the bill.
Yeah, you did last?
Oh.
Turn the heat off.
We didn't pay the bill. All right, at nine eighteen, I reconvene back into regular session. I will entertain a motion on the executive session discussions.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve the city manager's contract as agreed to in executive session.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Charlie second. All those in favor raise your right hand. All those opposed? All right, then I will accept the motion to adjourn.
I move to adjourn.
The motion we adjourn.
All those in favor, nine nineteen, we adjourn. Thank y'all.
Turn your lights off.